Good evening. It is Monday, May 8th. This is the Guilford Board of Education. Welcome to our regular meeting. I invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next is the April 3rd, 2023 Board of Education Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes for that Monday, April 3rd meeting?
A move.
Second. Are there any corrections, questions about those minutes? Yeah, go ahead, page four.
Page four, item 9.6. It said, "Discuss for possible action Board of Finances," and it's supposed to read 100,000 reduction. You see right here, it's just the month, it looks like it's 10,000. One zero zero.
Oh, whoa, 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 it's missing a zero.
It's missing a zero. It is like there's a 100 and a comma. I don't know what you're talking about.
I got that. We're missing a zero at the end.
We're just missing a zero.
No, you're exactly right. Thank you so much. And then, actually, I just had a correction, same page, also almost as minor, 9.3, approving the donation for the GHS, baseball dugout. We just have the wrong letter there. Any other corrections? All right. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the April 3rd, 2023 Board of Ed Minutes as amended. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? All right. The April 24th, 2023 Workshop Meeting Minutes, is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Some.
Second.
Any corrections to these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions?
I abstained. I was there, but I had to leave early. So I don't know if we should strike me from board members present or not. I was only there for about the first half hour.
You were present.
You were present.
Yeah, that's fine.
But you want to abstain from approving minutes. That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now for public forum on topics on the board agenda. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address the board on topics on the agenda? All right, hearing none. We will move to review an approval of expenditures for the month of April. And I'm going to turn to Mr. Schrader on that.
So expenditures for the month of April 2023 were $5,327,112.06. Expenditures and the encumbrances through the end of March were 79.78% of the budget as compared to 77.44% in the '21-'22 fiscal year. Salaries were roughly equivalent and approximate the prior year. Employee benefits were actually less. However, purchasing services, tuition, supplies, materials, and transportation were all above and higher than expected as compared to the prior year. A couple notes from specific line items. Legal fees due to basically labor and employment issues, special ed review, as well as behavioral issues with students, as well as freedom of information requests have gone up notably. Also, transportation and fuel expenses as well as supplies have gone up. Obviously, those are kind of inflation-driven. For a couple of line items that I thought were of note, included some purchases for music supplies, digital whiteboards at all the elementary schools, as well as some security enhancements that were some cameras that were installed. So I am, the warrant that we are submitting is the total of all payments for the month listed alphabetically. The total of the payments listed on the warrant is $2,572,657.45.
Excellent, thank you. Comments, questions? We did review the expenditures and the warrant in detail in the Operations Committee meeting that happened just prior to this. Any other thoughts, questions? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the expenditures for the month of April 2023?
Some.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? None. All righty. Communications, do any of my colleagues have communications they want to report out at this time?
I do, if that's okay.
Yes, absolutely.
I received communication that one of our student representatives this weekend received an award called a She-Ro Award, which is an award that goes to an outstanding woman in our town who does exceptional things and has achieved exceptional things. And it was Ruby Espejo.
Yes.
And when I asked what she received the reward for, the answer was sheer awesomeness. Fabulous person. And so I just wanted to congratulate you for that and recognize you for that.
Oh, that's awesome. Ruby, congratulations. That's terrific.
Yes, it was very, very, very exciting. I got to see my.
I got to be there with her, so it was really special. And Liza was there, yeah, it was a really special, it's through Women and Family Life Center. And every year, they receive nominations for She-Ros, and there was 20, but Ruby was one of only a few students. So it was really incredible.
Oh, that's, that's really terrific.
Thank you so much.
That's a great communication.
It was a real.
Anyone want to try to top that? Truly, are there any other communications that people want to report? All right. Oh, you do, yes.
I went to the Calvin Lee Talent Show.
Yeah.
And it was very entertaining, incredible how skilled a lot of these kids are musically, comedy.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So it was really enjoyable.
That's awesome. Excellent. All righty. Student Representatives.
All right, I can go. At Guilford Lakes, early in May, they had a world champion bicycle, bicyclist or cyclist come who was very good at doing bike tricks. So he came and talked about perseverance, resilience, and some of their core values and got to show off some of his cool tricks. They also had a talent show, so I just saw pictures. But either there was some piano, some other music groups, some stunts, some dance routines. I think, imagine some of the same similar stuff. But the principal said that was a blast. They had an enrichment group that learned about the Indian Festival of Colors. So they danced to Bollywood music and threw bright colors around the room. And then they had a kindergarten music performance, and there had been tennis lessons going on before and after school. And then at Melissa Jones, there's a lot of field trips, so kindergarten went to the police and fire station. First graders went to the Beardsley Zoo. Third graders went to the Mystic Aquarium, and fourth graders went to Mystic Seaport. And Principal Han also wanted to thank Dr. Freeman and GEA for the pizza and ice cream that the faculty had two weeks ago.
That's great. At Aduwe Cox, this past month, they focused on perspective, specifically seeing through other people's eyes. They did have a superhero parade. And they also have a, I believe, a, actually, let me make sure I got, oh, therapy dog. They have a new therapy dog named Truman. And so they're hoping for Truman to come and visit them more often. But I think it's very cool, and maybe Guilford High School should get that more as well. But at Adams, they're doing great with their spring sports. Clara did tell me that you just saw the track meet.
Yeah, I went to that, a track meet, home track meet today, and I got to watch the girls' 4x4 team break a record that I had, so. So kudos to them. So apparently, they're doing very well. And I also volunteer at Adams for Unified Sports, so Unified is up and running. We're hoping, we're doing a carnival here at the high school for Unified Sports. We're hoping to get some volunteers from our partners at Adams to come up and volunteer at our carnival. As for the high school, I know that juniors just had their prom this past weekend. I heard that it was very well-attended, a lot of teachers even were on the dance floor. Everybody was very happy and excited for junior prom. Senior activities are starting, so I have my senior outing, May 25th. We also have our senior awards that same night, May 25th. And this past month, or we have been focusing on AP and IB testing more recently. Unfortunately, I have my IB Spanish test coming up, but that's okay.
Something tells me we're going to do great.
But yes, that's all.
At Baldwin, smarter balanced testing has started, and it's going well. Baldwin has developed a testing schedule that has minimal impact on the regular school day schedule. Testing will continue throughout the next couple of weeks there. Focusing on transitions from 4th grade year to 5th grade year. Parent questionnaires have been sent to the parents of all incoming 4th grade students. Later this month, Baldwin will be sharing information about student music selections at VMS next year. Very exciting. And they are hosting a parent information session for parents of incoming 5th graders later this month. Just after Memorial Day, Mr. Hamer will be visiting each grade 4 classroom at all four elementary schools to meet the kids and answer their questions about the transition. In early June, some current 5th grade students will return to their elementary schools to answer questions from a student's perspective. And there will be an open house for students and parents to come to the building and become familiar with the school's layout. All these plans will help provide a smooth transition from the elementary school to Baldwin. And Teacher Appreciation Week is this week. Many things go out to the PTO and the whole Baldwin community for supporting teachers this week. There will be treats and surprises all week long for members of the Baldwin staff. Over at Calvin Lee, Nurse Deanna and 4th grader Ruby Wasserman have been supporting a local animal shelter by collecting items such as dog bones, kitten milk, paper towels, and cat litter. The Calvin Lee PTO devoted $5,000 to the Physical Education Department this year. That resulted in new equipment like fit washes, reaction balls, and recessed classroom kits. Huge thanks go out to the PTO for making gym class so engaging. At Guilford Public, the Guilford Police Department School Resource Officer, Scott Gingrich, and the Calvin Lee Library Media Specialist, Cheryl Monaco, held an internet safety class for 3rd and 4th graders a few weeks ago. Students learned to ignore or delete messages from those we don't know, to never share personal info, and always to be kind online. And here at GHS, we're in the middle of AP testing season, very busy for lots of us. Spring sports are entering the postseason. We saw the baseball team having a foster party down there as we walked in. Student government elections are up and running soon enough. Kids are getting their campaigns on, very exciting.
Does the school, does this resource officer go to all the elementary schools? Is that something that's offered at all, the internet safety to the kids?
He's available to all the schools. Whether or not he schedules with the media specialist to be part of that or not could be different at each different building.
Just seems like a really good idea. Absolutely.
The answer may be yes, I just don't know off the top of my head.
Yes.
Quasi? Yeah. Awesome. Have fun.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you have nice weather.
I know, I hope.
Don't get a sunburn.
I know.
They all come on sunburns from your order bag.
Today, I had lunch outside for the first time, and it was beautiful, and I have a little bit of eczema.
Excellent. Terrific. Any other questions for your student reps?
Just as you guys close out the year, best of luck.
Thank you.
You guys will do great, but best of luck.
Absolutely. As usual, you are welcome to stay. If you need to go, you're welcome to as well. And we just appreciate your input every month, so thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will see them next month. Yes, don't worry. And I'll let anyone go without a big goodbye. Okay, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Freeman, turning it to you.
Thank you, and I'll start with something that one of the reps mentioned. A couple Wednesdays ago, we, as a full district, took one of our Wednesday afternoon planning times and invited all of the staff to join together here at the high school. So it was a bit of a rolling opportunity. The high school staff was available earliest, the elementary staff came towards the end. We had pizza trucks from Naples that were here. The GEA provided pizza for all of our staff. There was an ice cream truck here, the district provided the ice cream truck. There were activities and games in the gymnasium, and all of our teachers were encouraged to spend time with friends and colleagues that they don't always see every day and to spend a little bit of time thinking about themselves and thinking about their own wellness so that as we move into the busy spring season, we just took a moment and let everybody catch their breath. And it was very much appreciated by the staff across the district. The pizza trucks had become a bit of a tradition connected to convocation. We had scheduling concerns and complications because convocation was so packed full. But after this sort of spring recognition, I've heard from a number of the staff members that they think this might be better timing for that activity. It was a nice opportunity to get together with people that you don't see every single day. So I was glad that that got mentioned, and then I was able to follow up on that. I'm particularly excited, however, to remind the board, but also to take an opportunity on camera to update everybody on the last board meeting that we had. So on April 24th, at Baldwin, in the Baldwin Media Center, we spent an entire evening listening to a presentation and then talking about the Open Choice Program. This is something that we began discussing in Guilford around school year 18, 19, and we put on hold. We put on hold for a number of reasons. The Open Choice Program is a program that is organized through the Regional Education Service Center, ACES, has been in place for 25 years centered around New Haven area and Shoreline area towns and schools. The Open Choice Program allows students from New Haven who enter into a lottery and who are accepted to be placed in New Haven area and Shoreline schools. Communities like Branford, North Branford, East Haven, Cheshire have been participating in this program, again, some of them for as long as 25 years. Likewise, it provides Guilford students with the opportunity, if they choose to enter into a lottery, to attend some of the really interesting magnet programs that are offered through the New Haven Public Schools. This program is offered on a space-available process. So where we see that we have small classrooms and seats available, we would make those seats available to the lottery through the New Haven schools. It would not increase staffing or expense here in Guilford. In fact, the transportation is covered by ACES through state grants and costs. In fact, the state reimburses the district on a per-student scale based on how many students we have. The meeting was recorded. There are materials from that meeting, as well as the actual recorded meeting, as well as some literature about choice programs and diversifying school populations in general that are all available on our website. The meeting is on our YouTube channel. I want to encourage everybody to take the opportunity to review those materials. I want to remind the board that it is my expectation that we'll be bringing this topic forward again at your next meeting in June, asking for your formal approval to begin participating in the Open Choice Program through ACES in September of '24. I want to say that again. I expect to be in front of you at your June meeting, asking for your approval to begin opening those choice seats in September of 2024. This will give us all of next year to get into the timeline, and there's a very clear timeline that ACES has about identifying those open spaces, making ACES aware and making those spots available to the New Haven-based lottery, as well as spending time preparing our principals and our teachers, meeting with other districts who have been doing this for decades, and learning how to do this well and how to support those children well. We expect that in 2024, we'll be offering seats at one grade level, 1st grade, that in following years, we will essentially exponentially ramp that up as we go from offering seats in 1st grade to then offering seats in 1st grade and 5th grade to then offering seats in 1st grade, 5th grade, and 9th grade, remembering that each time we do that, the students who move in continue to move and move through that process. I'm really excited about it. We have been talking about the values of diversity in Guilford for a long time. Diverse staff, diverse reading materials, diverse experiences, diverse opportunities. And again, there's materials on the website that talk about how diversifying the student body, bringing in students who have different experiences than our students who live here in Guilford, is a benefit for all, not just for the students who will have the opportunity to join us from New Haven, but for all of us who are part of the Guilford community as well. So we appreciated the opportunity to have that conversation with all of you on the 24th. We appreciated all the questions and conversation. This is our opportunity to make sure that the community is aware that this conversation is ongoing, to view all of that information, and I'm really excited to bring this forward to all of you in June for a decision to move forward.
Excellent. I know we did, obviously, as you noted, have this meeting most recently with the board, but I didn't know if anyone had questions. In the meantime, things that came up since?
No, I've actually spent a lot of time digging into this. I think it's an amazing program. I've actually spent some time speaking to other districts, people that I know that are involved in the program, and they speak so highly of it, especially the people over at ACES. You know, it was so nice to see Mr. Grimm the other night and really learn more about the program firsthand from them. And then hearing from it from schools that have been participating for years. It's an amazing opportunity for us.
And you just reminded me, there are approximately 370 students who are participating in the ACES-based program. Again, students who are attending districts like Branford, North Branford, Cheshire, North Haven this year. And there is a similar, there is a sister program that is centered out of Hartford, where Hartford-area students go to Farmington Valley. And I believe that program is significantly larger, and communities like Simsbury, Avon, West Hartford, East Hartford host students from the Hartford area as well. Again, it's been happening for decades in Connecticut. One last thing. Guilford hasn't participated before because Guilford was unable to participate in the past because of the way legislation around those regional educational service centers was written. We owe former Representative Sean Scanlon a debt of gratitude for helping to change the legislation so that Guilford now has the opportunity to participate, should you, as a board, choose to participate at your meeting in June when we bring this forward for a decision. We changed the law to make this possible for us to be able to participate.
I just, we talked about it in the workshop meeting, but I was hoping you could clarify again how it works with regard to special ed students. My understanding is it is like a blinded lottery. There is no disclosure at the time of enrollment whether or not the child might have a need. I understand transportation's covered. I understand reasonable costs are covered, and that might include paras from what I've heard, which is wonderful. But you are hoping not to add staffing?
Yes. So it's a really, it's a really important question. So when students join us, they will become Guilford Public School students. As you mentioned, some may come through the lottery and have identified special education needs, and some may develop needs over the years that they are here with us. Special education costs will be tracked separately, and then those costs are billed back to New Haven through our special education department. So similarly, at times, we have offered seats in our alternative high school or in one of our transitional programs to students who live in other communities. We've billed for those expenses to that home community. If there is a PPT, a Planning and Placement Team meeting for a child with special needs who comes to us through the Open Choice Program, ACES will attend that PPT. New Haven will attend that PPT. Guilford will attend that PPT. Expenses that are identified and approved will then be billed back to the New Haven school system. It's a really important question.
Then the only other thing is I have to share with the public. I'm a little bit surprised by the fact that, you know, I got your communication as a parent in the district immediately the day after our workshop. It was very informative, included all the pertinent information. But here we sit in an open meeting, and there's a vote that's supposed to happen in a month. And I'm just, I feel like this is a really big, exciting, important initiative, and I'm a little bit surprised we haven't heard anything. I haven't personally. So I just.
You mean from, from the community? Oh, from the community, okay. Yeah, yeah.
I just, you know, I'm assuming there are a lot of people excited about this. I'm just a little surprised it's not more of an opening.
I think also it's been, the idea's been around for a while, so maybe that's part of it.
Yeah, it's been a slow boil now for a few years, so maybe that's part of it.
I could say, just chatting on, you know, the fields, right, on the sports fields with parents, I think a lot of parents are, at least what I've heard from, surprised it's taken so long, right? So I've explained this is kind of, you know, where we were four years ago.
Yep.
And where we are now, and to your point about, you know, legislation impacting this. To your point, ask questions, please, the public, please ask questions.
Well, it's really intentional that I'm bringing this forward tonight as part of my report and highlighting it and not asking this board to take action tonight so that more people have an opportunity to view this tape and hopefully respond. You're right, all those materials that I'm referencing were packaged, they were sent out the Tuesday morning following our Monday meeting. They're all available on our website. I really encourage community members to take a look, and if you're excited about this, let us know.
Anything else? All righty, thank you.
Concludes my report.
So we are now down to the board agenda. 9.1 is to act on personnel items. So we have a number here to act on. The first is we're being asked to ratify the resignation for the purpose of retirement of the following administrator, Lisa Eaton. She's been at Adams Baldwin Middle School as coordinator of special ed, seven years of service to Guilford. Is there a motion to ratify this resignation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And certainly a thank you to Ms. Eaton for her service.
May I just make a note on the next one before we take that?
Absolutely.
So Mr. Buno is listed here, and it's in recognition of three years of service to Guilford. I want to clarify, there was a break in service. Mr. Buno had another 12 or 13 years of service as a teacher in Guilford Public Schools, left for exactly one school year to take an administrative job in another district, and then returned to us and has now, this time with us, served three years as an assistant principal here. So his most recent service is three years of service to Guilford, but it's much more than that in total. And I just wanted to note that before we.
No, thank you for doing that, because definitely I saw the three, and I was like, that's not right. So we are being asked to ratify the resignation of the following administrators, Kevin Buno, Guilford High School, most recently Assistant Principal at Guilford High School. Is there a motion?
I will note, Kevin leaves us to become a principal.
Yes.
And to become a principal at the Educational Center for the Arts in New Haven, which is a really good fit for him.
Which is a very good fit for him.
Yep, and so worth noting.
A loss for us, but a good fit for him for sure.
Yep, exactly.
So can I have a motion to ratify the resignation for Kevin Buno?
Some.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know, it always feels like, are we allowed to refuse? But no, we're really not. Please, so now we, we're being asked to ratify the resignation of the following teachers. Bruce Sumner, technology education teacher at Adams, 24 years of service in Guilford. Dawn Emmerman, Adams Baldwin Middle School's music teacher, one year of service. Megan Brunel, Cox Elementary, special education teacher, 1.5 years of service. Sarah Martin, Lakes Elementary School, out-of-district school psychologist, two years of service. Isabel Reyna, Isabel Reyna, Adams Middle School, art teacher, a year of service. And Jacqueline Chandler, Guilford High School English teacher, 10 years of service in Guilford. Is there a motion to ratify the resignations of these six teachers?
Some.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a thank you to all of them for their service.
Absolutely.
All right. 9.2 is to approve a donation of $4,720 from the Guilford Touchdown Club for the salary of an assistant football coach. I will note that this came to us several months ago. We did put it on hold. I want to acknowledge an error I made in understanding this donation. It is a donation for an assistant football coach for the past season, the 2022 season. So I am asking for approval for the donation of $4,720 from the Guilford Touchdown Club for the salary of an assistant football coach from this past football season. Is there a motion?
Some.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we want to thank the Guilford Touchdown Club for their continuous support for our students who play football here at Guilford High School. 9.3 is to approve a donation of $3,000. of $3,403 from the Guilford High School Girls Lacrosse Booster for the salary of an assistant coach. Is there a motion to approve this donation?
So, my understanding is this is for this season?
Correct.
That's right, for the upcoming season. Thank you. There was a motion?
Current season.
Current season, sorry, current season, the one we're in. It's May, somehow.
So moved.
So moved. Excellent, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a thank you certainly to the Guilford High School Girls Lacrosse Booster Club as well. 9.4 is to approve the disposal of obsolete materials valued over $2,000. We are being asked to approve the disposal of various Adams Science Textbooks to be donated to Discover Books to be repurposed and/or recycled. And I'm going to turn to you, Dr. Freeman, and give a brief explanation of why we do this occasionally.
Yeah, so you have the pertinent policy in your PAC. It's Exhibit 9.4. It's Policy 3214, and it is because this is overdue at Adams. This takes place constantly. It is an ongoing process, but when the value of the materials is over $2,000, it requires board approval. So, because you have the lengthy list of materials in front of you, because this is overdue, and the value is now over $2,000, we're here asking for your approval tonight. Disposal of obsolete and antiquated and unused materials happens constantly. When it hits certain benchmark numbers, we are required to bring it to you for approval or go through a process with the town when it is capital or hard equipment, and that's what's happening here tonight.
And I'll just note, for the viewing public, we have in front of us a list of 17 different titles, most copyrighted in 2005, one in 1995. In some cases, it is one copy, and in other cases, it is hundreds of copies of these texts, but all nearing 20 years, 20 years old.
Correct. And I believe in this case, all of these texts are being donated, most, if not all, of these texts are being donated.
Right, and that, yes, and that's right, there's a notation of donate on the far-right-hand column for all of these.
And nice to note that books are heavy. We don't have to ship them. They're covering the cost of picking up the books, so we're not going to be on the hook for a good deed here.
That is, that is an important, that's right, an important. So, again, we are being asked then to approve the disposal of these books valued at over $2,000 for recycling and/or donation to, for those purposes, of these science textbooks. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's everyone. Thank you. Okay, we are up to policy. 9.5 was to receive for possible action, a recommendation around Policy 1138.
So, that is a policy regarding public comment at board meetings, and the policy committee is actually going to recommend that we table that for this meeting.
Okay.
And same for 9.6, which is a related revision on order of business.
Okay, and I think what we're, my understanding is the policy committee is going to take that back for just further discussion?
Yep.
Okay, terrific. And then it will come back to the full board following...
Probably in July, because I think our policy meeting is end of June.
Okay, that's great to know. Thank you. So, then, we'll hold 9.5.1 and 9.6.1 and go to 9.6.2.
Right. So, 9.6.2 are, it's a recommendation for all of us to take a look at revisions to Policy 5134, which is non-resident students. This, we've talked about a bit. It's to allow students of our certified staff to be able to attend schools here if we have space. This is incent, to incentivize teachers to stay, to incentivize teachers to come to Guilford Public Schools. Dr. Freeman, do you want to talk a little bit more about the intent of this policy?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you. So, the policy around non-resident students has multiple sections, and our position about the attendance of non-resident students has always been very restrictive. This policy amendment would add a new definition, a new section, to that policy. It would, as you said, identify the children of certified staff members as non-residents who would have the opportunity to attend Guilford Public Schools. Again, this is on a space-available basis. We would not add staff or add expenses to accommodate those students, but if space existed, those students would be able to attend at a modified tuition rate, and the tuition rate would be based on years of service of those certified staff members. So, each year, the state calculates a per-student expenditure. In your policy, I believe it is referred to as the CPSE, but the state calculates our per-student expenditures each year. The tuition rate for those students would be based on that per-student expenditure. For certified staff members who have worked in the district for five or fewer years, they would pay 50% of that per-student expenditure. For staff members who have been in the district, serving in Guilford for five to 10 years, it would be 25% of that rate, and for teachers or certified staff members who have been working in Guilford for 10 or more years, it would be 10% of that rate. Again, remember that we will not be adding staff. We will not be adding a full per-student expenditure anytime one of those students should choose to attend. There's more language in the policy. There's language in there, again, about transportation, about special education costs. I encourage you all to take a look at that tonight. This is receive-only. Policy Committee has been talking about this for some time. This topic has come up in negotiations at both the teacher and administrative level. We thought more appropriate to deal with it publicly through the policy committee, and then the board's policy book publicly here. So, again, we've been talking about it for some time. It is a receive item for the board tonight. We expect that we'll be asking for approval for this policy modification at your June meeting. To put some scope and scale around this, Madison has a policy that is very similar to what we just described here tonight, and I believe that they have never had more than student population in the single digits that has taken advantage of this. We don't see this being a significant population increase. What's important, and it's taken me a really long time to get here, but what's important is that as teacher hiring and retention gets more challenging, we see this as a significant tool in our ability to hire and retain the best teachers. What better benefit could we offer to the teachers that we invite to teach in our district and who we want to hold in our district than to allow them the opportunity to have their own children attend the schools that we provide and that they help create every single day? Remember, the teacher contract does not have perks that a lot of other districts provide, like tuition reimbursement. This would be a benefit that we could provide, leveraging the quality of our system itself and our schools themselves to make sure that we're hiring and holding on to the absolute best teachers around.
Dr. Freeman, you just mentioned Madison. I'm not on the policy committee, but I remember when this came up several years ago during teacher negotiations. There are a number of districts in the state who offer various approaches to this, but offer this to certified staff in their district.
Yes, this is absolutely not a new idea. We did not invent this. Lots of districts do this. We looked at a number of different district versions. I reference Madison because they're our closest neighbor, and because the design that we bring forward is very similar to the design that they offer in Madison as well.
Okay. Dr. Freeman, with the tuition, I can't imagine with the number of, like, under 10, that there's a financial impact to the district in terms of taking those students on at a reduced, you know, per pupil cost, right?
No, again, it's really going to be based on seats available, and so, for instance, if a staff member comes forward next year and has an elementary-age child that they want to enroll, I would look at the elementary enrollments, look at the grade level we were talking about, and they would be offered that seat in the elementary school that currently had the smallest classes at that grade level, if those classes weren't already pushing the board, the board recommendations for those grade levels. We wouldn't add a teacher to make it possible for that student to attend, and we wouldn't place that child in a setting where the classes were already approaching or pushing those board recommendations. We'd place that child in a, in a setting where there was space, and the class was happening already. You have, instead of a class of 13, we'd create a class of 14 that would bear no additional expense for Guilford.
And I read somewhere, it's like on an annual basis that they have to, like, once the student is accepted into the district, does that family then have to reapply every year to have that student, or is that, it's so, even if, like, say, enrollment just spikes in that grade, and you have three or four out of, you know, non-resident students, they're safe? Their spots are safe here in district?
The policy is written in such a way to protect the district first. The assumption would be that those students...
Because it says shall be for one school year or less.
Yes, so...
Okay, I just didn't know how that...
There would be an automatic renewal as long as there were no other circumstances or reasons for the district to choose not to renew that placement. Essentially, it would be much more similar to a private school placement. So, if you enroll your child at Xavier, they assume your child's coming back next year unless they tell you he's not. And so, right, we would be in the position of the tuition-based school in that setting. We have no obligation to non-resident children to provide their education, but we're choosing to do so. The policy is very much written to be protective of the district rather than protective of the family in this case.
Thank you.
And how does it work when the parent leaves the district as an employee?
Then this agreement would end. This is a benefit offered to children of certified employees of the school district. If the, if the parent stopped being a certified employee of the school district, that opportunity would no longer be available to the student.
So, unlike an open-choice student who has a spot for their tenure in education, this would be only, only required if the parent was still employed?
Correct. And even in that case, it is a purchased seat that is provided at the district's discretion. There's much less protection in this case than there is in what we discussed earlier.
And per the policy, just to confirm and hear it out loud, no transportation costs?
Correct.
And special education costs are incurred where?
They would either be covered by the, by the parent or the home district, and at times, that would have to be, that would have to be negotiated.
Okay.
Other questions at this time about this? All right, so this is a receive item tonight. What that means is, we each have the next month to look this over, do any kind of research or look into any questions we have. Mrs. Peck, I assume if we have questions, we can address them to you or the administration, and then we should be prepared to review this as an act on item next month. Yes. Excellent, all right. Okay, so that comes to the end of the board agenda, part of our meeting. Now, reports of committees. Policy Committee, is there anything else you want to report out on?
I think we've covered a lot of policy.
All right. Operations Committee, anything else to report out on?
Yeah, so we just had our Operations Committee at 6 o'clock before this meeting. Some updates on the dining services side, healthy participation, which is nice to see, especially in light of, of free lunches for our students, as well as, we're in a position in which we're starting to look into a new point-of-sale system for our dining services, which will be nice. That'll be district-wide. In terms of some facility updates, this will be nice to hear. The Baldwin security system that we've all seen implemented now and has been deemed successful is, is now being vetted out for all the rest of the schools district-wide. So, we will soon get updates on, on just exactly what that project looks like for the rest of the schools in the district. Parents at Cox and Lakes will be happy to know that cell phone repeaters are being installed there, so we'll finally have some cell phone service went in, in the schools. And then, some projects of note that'll be taking off in the summer, once school is out, is the Cox Media Center and the Baldwin Gym Floor.
Excellent. All right. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, anything to report out?
No.
No. All right. Liaisons to Town Committees, anybody have anything to report out on that? Okay. And Learn Board of Directors, we did not have an attendant. Okay, public questions or comment? There's an opportunity for the public to address the board now, if they so choose, if they manage to address the board. We ask that you give your name and address for the minutes, please.
And I will keep time.
That's right, and four minutes, please. Thank you.
Certainly. Tim Tramblyn, 107 Dom Ave, D-O-H-M. In the past, I've been told by board members that the school, the school has no desire to sexualize our children or to encourage sexuality within our children, and that's wonderful to hear. I'm glad to hear that. We've had discussions regarding books in the library recently that seem to, in my opinion, go contrary to those statements, and I understand that we can disagree on that. But also today, I got an email from a guidance counselor that is encouraging students to engage in a pride parade or pride event in a couple of weeks. And my understanding is that the school wants to embrace an identity, and wants to make sure everybody's included and accepted, which is wonderful. Everybody should feel included. Everybody should feel accepted. I'm concerned that endorsing and encouraging students to participate in, up to and including classroom teachers, inviting the students to participate as a group, may cross the line into encouraging sexuality and sexual behaviors in children as they, minors, go to a pride event where they will almost certainly be exposed to and be encouraged to participate in sexual behavior. And that's my concern tonight, is that the school is encouraging sexual behavior in minors, to your point. Thank you.
I feel the need to, to respond that, I believe, a pride parade is supporting individuals who are part of the LGBTQ community. That is not about supporting any kind of sexual behavior. It is supporting individuals who identify in a variety of ways.
Dr. Al Stracey, if I may go a little further. While I am not involved in the organizing of this event, I feel it's completely safe to suggest that there will be no sexual behavior taking place at the event. We are not encouraging anyone to participate in sexual behavior or activity by participating them, by encouraging them to participate in a parade.
And I hope you're right, and...
I assure you that I am.
It's voluntary.
That's wonderful. That's really what I want, is to hear that you absolutely are saying there will not, will not be happening at that event.
There will be no sexual activity occurring at that parade.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? All right, we are at the end of our meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much for joining us tonight.